This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the town of North Haven.
Good evening. I'd like to call the November 8th, 2018 meeting of the North Haven Board of Education to order at 6:30 PM. Good evening, everybody. Our first item is our consent agenda, which are the minutes of October 16th, 2018. The retirement of Ms. Barbara Kensington, a paraprofessional at Greenacre School, and also the happiness of a maternity leave for Sarah Peroni, a grade-three teacher at Clintonville. May I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Well, I would just like to say that, with great sadness, and happiness for Barbara, that she's retiring. But I mean, I remember her, I mean, she's been in the school system since, I think, the late 80s or early 90s. And she's just a good worker, you know, the kids love her. She's very creative, very imaginative, very skilled. And she's, I'm gonna, I'm sorry to say that the kids that are coming up won't have, you know, an association with her. And I wish her all the best.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay, all in favor? Any polls, any extensions? Thank you. Tim, you're up.
Hi.
Hi. Before we start, I would like to say that Dr. Delai has told us we will have a junior representative who has now joined us. I'm sorry, Dr. Delai, I don't remember her name.
Oh, I just applied the three kids to different positions.
I'm sorry. Okay, I don't want to put you on--
Just give me a second.
I don't want to put you on the spot.
We did that foundation too, and we did something else.
Um, I'm sorry, I didn't want to put you on the spot. I read it really quickly. But she could not join us tonight, but she will be, I want to say Zoe, but--
Yeah, that's right. Zoe Burns is coming here.
Okay. Zoe Burns will be joining us as a student rep for North Haven High School. And she will be joining us next month. So we welcome her, so you will have a counterpart, Tim.
Okay.
Thanks.
Um, so we actually just had a class office meeting today, which we did, so a bunch of fresh news. Um, so we finished the raffle, and we gave away a prom plate kit, so it was successful. We raised money off of that, too. Um, we're preparing a fundraiser at Be Galicious to get some money. And we're also--
What's the fundraiser for Be--
Yeah, and when.
And where.
You've got a lot of potential fundraisers here.
Oh, I think it's gonna be next month or next year. We're still trying to prepare it, it's just like an idea.
Okay. Let us know.
Keep us posted.
Yeah, really. It's a good idea, too. A very good idea.
And we're also preparing like a Batman tournament--
Batman?
Yeah, for a school-wide fundraiser. Um, we're also doing the senior-to-senior breakfast. I guess it's like an annual occasion. And I, uh, we have a date set, it's for December 4th.
December 4th?
Yeah, for the senior-to-senior breakfast. And we were just wondering if we could post a message on the board's website as like an advertisement.
About the senior-to-senior?
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely, we can talk about that. You'll need to talk with, Melinda, you put them in--
I was gonna say, if you send exactly what you'd like posted to Joyce Lepre, Dr. Cronin's secretary, then we can get it posted for you. That'll be no problem.
Um, you know, the senior-to-senior breakfast is always just like a wonderful, wonderful time. I know many of us try and get that time off, that day, to go to that.
I'm actually gonna be a senior this year.
Okay, there you go. He could be your guest. But you might also perhaps want to post it on the North Haven Community page, which is a Facebook page. They may allow you to do that, too.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's it.
All right, great, thanks, Tim. Um, I don't have much on mine. I just would like to publicly say Dr. Cronin could not be here tonight. In his eight years of being a board on our superintendent, this is the first board meeting he's ever missed. So he couldn't be here tonight. But I would like to introduce everyone to Joseph Arardi. He's our consultant in the superintendent search. And he is going to give us a summary of the search today. He's gonna turn it to us.
Thank you so much. What's coming around is the executive summary, and there's plenty at the end for the audience. So if the audience would like a copy of that, that's terrific, too. Uh, let me start by just sharing that this is hot off the press as recently as last evening at Ridge Road. We had, I thought, a terrific meeting, actually, with somewhere between probably 20 to 25 parents in attendance. And all sharing their thoughts to build the profile. I think it's important for me to share with the school board, with the audience, with the viewing audience, with the community, that this has really been a pleasure. Getting to know North Haven, meeting with faculty, meeting with staff, meeting with parents. And really, in all cases, the listening tour on my end were from very, very caring folks. And I think that served this community well, and it serves your applicant pool well. Uh, what I tried to do is to take the plus 250 survey results and put it into a summary with the script notes that I had from community forums and from our meetings, as I just mentioned, with parents, faculty, and staff. I don't want to read the document to you, but I would like to share the information particularly with our viewing audience. To start with, the, um, the skill set that the community, through the survey and through conversations, are hoping for, on top of the pilot's communication, they really want someone to carry on the tradition that's presently in place, at least I believe, or at least they believe what's presently in place, with central office. Communications at all levels, within the organization and all levels outside of the organization. Particularly, the conversations around school business partnerships came up. In more than one forum, and the community believes that could be the answer to some of the budget concerns that not only North Haven will have, but all communities will have as you try to put your fiscal plans together. They want somebody who is highly credentialed with character. They want someone who's genuine, caring, and highly capable to lead. They're looking for somebody who has a background and an understanding of fiscal, and they're looking for somebody who has the strength to empower others. And that was a really interesting conversation in a couple of places. They want somebody who's competent enough in their skill set to be able to delegate appropriately and build capacity within. They're also hoping that the new school leader is willing to be patient. This was the reoccurring conversation in nearly every meeting that I had. The concern is that somebody will come in, have their own value set or their own vision, and begin to make significant change without going on a learning and listening tour. And that was particularly a loud voice around performing in fine arts, around world language, and around your integrated day program. And that was heard in multiple places. If you--
Excuse me, Joe.
Sure.
Mary? I know you'd be interested in this. Can you just take a paper at the end there?
Can I see a job? We'll be having back here.
Okay, thank you. I knew you would be interested in that, I'm sorry, Joe.
Yeah, no problem. Um, I talked a little bit about the character traits, I don't have to repeat them. And again, on more than one occasion, they want me, and it's my job and my role, and I assure the school board and the community publicly, that they want to make sure that whoever the board, the hiring committee, goes forward with, when you open the closet, there's no skeletons. So they want somebody with an impeccable background that's going to come to North Haven and not try to, in any way, hide what's happened in their past. And that was a repeated conversation in a number of places. I love the information around the community's belief of what North Haven public does best. If they, if it was said once, it was said 200 times, how proud this town is of those who call themselves a North Haven public school graduate. And it wasn't just accolades around the high school, it was around the pre-K-12 experience. That this community believes that if a student starts and ends in this town, they are not only prepared, they are ready to launch. In all aspects, there is comments around ready for the military, ready for the workforce, ready for higher education, ready for your most distinguished schools in the country. And that was said in narrative form in the survey over and over again. The other piece which I thought, and I put a whole bunch of parts together to make statement number two, that this community believes they have a real good base and an understanding of what is needed in regards to personnel staffing in fiscal, what is needed to have successful schools. Community conversations around the retention of high-level staff at all levels, and they're proud of that, that they believe that the public school staff, not just teaching, not just admin, but all levels, are really good role models and mentors for children in this district. Conversations of success around that curriculum is updated, there's a plan in place, it makes sense, it's good for kids. And they're pleased and proud that today's instruction is preparing students for tomorrow's unknown. Item number five, it's not, it's not because it's fifth in the order, it just happened I placed it number five, is that one of the reasons why your applicant pool is going to be so deep is that the community also feels that the central office, I use the term "leadership team", and that's inclusive of your high-level administrators in your central office, that they are respected, they're engaged, and they're user-friendly. The challenges, in some cases, some of these challenges could be in any public school district across the country. Real concern around how to stretch dollars. Real concern around that. And the conversation that would follow the real concern is, please, do your absolute best, whoever is on board, that the first thing that won't happen is the reduction in staff. I heard lots of information around programs that you had and programs that were lost over time. And the hope is that that ship has sailed and that there's some creativity with your new school leader who's able to retain and enhance. Item two and item three regarding appropriate balance. Conversation particularly with your pre-K, your kinders, and your primary school parents. They're hoping that the new school leader understands the importance of play. The belief is that play is being lost because of standards that are coming on top of you from forces that you don't control. Challenges around your infrastructure, not at your middle or your high school, which is a beautiful campus, but lots of concerns around now how we're gonna take care of the elementary schools, which are aging. I think you all know that. Challenge to maintain and enhance your present level of safety. And the final challenge, which was the largest of the five, talked about the transition from elementary to middle, middle to high school. That they want it to be seamless, they want to make sure that your new superintendent understands that it's a pre-K-12 district and that those jumping off and starting points are really critical. What I tried to do in all the conversations that I had, and I had a whole bunch, there were a number of folks who felt just more comfortable calling and talking rather than speaking in a group. And I was thrilled and pleased with that. Pervasive throughout every meeting that I held in conversation was probably in bold print to the hiring committee, please somehow assure us that whoever you hire plans to stay. And that's a really hard thing. And we could talk about that with the hiring committee at some point. But they really want somebody who's gonna be here, they'll have their vision, they'll work together, and that person plans to stay here for an extended period of time. What they don't want is someone here for a year, brand-new vision, brand-new superintendent, and then they do it all over again. The second bullet I spoke a little bit about, wanting someone who's going to be patient, go on a listening and learning tour before making any change. They want someone who's gonna be visible and somebody who's out of their office. They're looking for somebody who can speak clearly, articulately, to all levels of stakeholders in the town. They want somebody who's confident. And most of all, I heard this over and over again, they want somebody who never forgets that they're working to make the life of children better. They're not about politics, they're about making the life of children better. That's the executive summary. I do want to share publicly just a bit around the application process and the applicant pool. I had mentioned, probably two and a half months ago, that in most cases, searches in Connecticut, they're going to yield between 12 and 15 applications. And I shared with you that I was confident that North Haven would be a district that would do better than that. And you certainly did. And I believe the number is that you had 33 applications and completed apps, which I'll be sharing with you, with the hiring committee after this meeting. I believe your number was 27. You have highly regarded sitting superintendents in your application pool, you have assistant superintendents, you have central office administrators, and you have site-level administrators. So I'm pleased with your application and your applicant pool. Your applicant pool, I believe, represents four different states. And the applicants that will be in front of you this evening have all been vetted in regards to an initial screening. And I sit here certain that the hiring committee has their next superintendent to be found and to meet over the next couple of weeks. So in conclusion, a personal thank you to everyone who gave time, because time is treasure. And a thank you to the school board, who really has been all-in to make this a successful beginning to the search. I look forward to the next two or three weeks. And I look forward to you meeting the applicants that will be sitting in front of you. I don't know if there's questions or comments or thoughts that folks may have for me.
I would even open that up to the audience, if anyone has any questions that they'd like to ask, Joe. One of the things that this board did, and I think many people know that, as a board, for many years, we've been running a very open board, as much as possible, and a transparent board. So by having Joe go out to the stakeholders and send out the surveys, and again, speaking here, speaking publicly, because we believe that, at the Board of Ed, as Wes and I just talked about the other day, at the Board of Ed, the higher end of a superintendent is one of the most important things, if not the most important things that we do. So we just wanted to have the public and the teachers and the administrator and parents, business owners, know what we're doing and what the process is to hire a superintendent, and where we are. And I have to tell you, it's been a pleasure working with Joe.
Likewise.
He has been open to us. He has called us, he has shared things with us, and we appreciate that. We're looking, as sad as I am to see Dr. Cronin move on to his next journey in life, I'm gonna miss him, but I'm looking forward to getting someone new. So if anyone has any questions, please ask anyone from the board or out.
But yeah, I just want to make one more statement, because if I forget, I'm gonna feel guilty driving home. A public thank you to Joyce Lepre, who has just been, every time I pick up the phone, whatever I ask is done. I just wanted to state that.
Thank you. Okay, any questions? Sure.
Do I need the mic?
Yeah.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Arardi. I know that you've worked really hard, and I've heard amazing feedback from everybody who's met with you, too. So, thanks for being very responsive. I think the question I have is, the search started after school year started. And we're trying to wrap that up in the next couple of weeks. I know that we have an amazing group of candidates. However, if they are coming from superintendent or a site administrator, whatever position, they are leaving a school district of their own. So I question what is causing them to leave? And, and, yeah, what kind of character I think is coming from somebody who would kind of not continue out their contract in a place? So that's my question for you, I think.
Sure, yeah, I can speak to that. They, I think the first thing to understand with your-- it's a great question, so thank you for asking it. But the first thing to understand is that I don't believe the North Haven Board of Education will ever demand anything other than their new superintendent to leave their present district in a professional manner. And really, what that means is that in administrative contracts, it's common language in nearly every administrator's contract, that there's a 90-day window that the professional has the opportunity to negotiate with their present employer. However, their present employer could hold them for 90 days. You know, the question that you ask is an interesting one because in the world of central office leaders and building administrators, the year never ends. Right? The summertime for some folks, particularly for your assistant superintendents of curriculum instruction, that's their busiest time. The directors of HR, that's their busiest time. And then they exhale when school starts, in some cases. So I think to drill down a little bit further on your question, the character of the applicants that I'll be suggesting to the hiring committee to interview, that to me is the premium quality that is most-- you can teach anybody anything. But the piece around integrity and honesty and trust, those are the values that make school superintendents successful. And as part of my role as a consultant, I knocked on doors of school administrators who had no thought of leaving. And so I was the catalyst to say, you know what? Because when you want to leave your job is when you're at the highest point. The recommendations that are coming from me, I will never recommend anybody who's running. And there are folks who are. But that's not the pool of applicants. So I can assure you, and I'm glad you asked it, I can assure you that the applicant pool that's being recommended for interviews are folks of the highest level integrity, and they would never, ever leave their district dry. And sometimes change is good.
Mary White, Summer Lane. So I'd like to ask a question about longevity. And so we certainly don't want to have a superintendent that's gonna be here for a very short period of time then leave. So can you answer the question as to what can be included, you know, legally, like in their contract as far as, you know, they are, could be obligated or would be obligated to stay for like a period of at least five years or something? And if they decide to, you know, leave for higher aspirations or whatever, that there would be a penalty? I mean, could you just talk a little bit about that?
Sure. I think, Mary, the first thing I want to share is that if you ask a candidate who's being interviewed how long they plan to stay, nearly every candidate's gonna tell you this is their career ender, they're gonna stay here till they retire. If they don't live in this community, they're gonna move in. So the applicant usually is savvy enough to figure out what the hiring committee is hoping for, right? The bottom line is, the real proof in the pudding has to do with the review of that person's resume. So if somebody is jumping every two years, every year, it's an indicator of one of two things. Either they're moving way too fast professionally, or it hasn't worked where they're presently working. And so that's the best indicator. What happens in the state of Connecticut is that superintendents sign three-year contracts. Could there be language that would indicate longevity for the three years? I'm certain there could be. I don't know how that language would be held. But the bottom line to that question really is around background and past practice. It's just, I don't think you want somebody who's been in eight different positions in the past 10 years. What you want is somebody who has been at a, at a, at a location for an extended period of time.
Any other questions? Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Do, does anyone have any unfinished business to bring up from last? I don't have any new business. Can really go on to and discuss. I just will say that a couple of people have come to me already looking at things that they'd like us to look at for our budget for next year. And I've asked them to come and talk to the board at our next meeting in December. So report of standing committee, dot ACIS.
Because of professional obligations, I was not able to attend the meeting this afternoon. But I did, on the agenda was the tuition rates, the tuition that ACIS is setting for their buildings, their schools, next year. And I have the, and it was approved, and I have the amounts. And I'd like Dana to have them, because it's nice, well, not nice, but it's very thoughtful of ACIS to let us know how much they're gonna be charging for the 2019--
For planning, right?
Yeah, for planning, so that we have those figures while we're doing our budget.
Yeah, I know, just looking at it. This is what they would charge us if somebody was going there from the school?
Well, that, what we, yes, and we do, we have, you know, a small amount of students. You know, maybe one in Village, one in Whitney East, one in New York. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Curriculum instruction and planning have a lot going on.
Well, we have a lot of field trips to approve. Besides that, I don't have a lot to say. I, I guess Melinda will have to fill me in if I don't, if I don't report everything, because I had a dentist appointment and was a little late. I would have rather been at the curriculum instruction. But we, we went over some of the topics that were, that were planned for Professional Development Day. Maybe the most important one was the Stop the Bleed program. There was some report card work about how to use the conferences and the comment part of the report cards. I guess there was some discussion at the high school about security and at the middle school about the NEASC process. We, we recommended for approval, is this an action item? I don't know, the AP, French Language and Culture Proposal.
As a course offering.
As a course offering. And then beyond that, there's the field trips. So do we look at those now, or?
Thank you. Want me to just go through my list?
That'd be great.
Okay.
Unless somebody, everybody looked at their program.
And the other thing, I just want to jump in before we get to it. The two culinary field trips, they're both on for approval, but depending on fundraising--
Yep.
They'll decide which one they want to go through. So just to get our ducks in a row on that.
So it's either or?
Either or, correct. Their first choice is the Disney one again, because they want to keep their title of their winnings from last year, so--
Of course.
What did they come in, second or third?
Second.
Like a side dish?
Yeah, I'm trying to think if they went home. Okay.
Martin's family.
Let's start first. Can I have a motion to approve the North Haven High School Future Problem Solvers trip to the University of Massachusetts Amherst Campus in Amherst, Mass. for the week of June 5th through June 20-- excuse me, through June 9th. I had them going through 20.
It's a long trip.
Second, any further discussion?
Can I ask a general question?
Sure.
No, I was gonna say, it's nice when the Future Problem Solvers are meeting in New England as opposed to Minnesota and Michigan.
Yeah.
It saves--
Which they've been, yeah.
Yeah.
Idaho.
Yeah.
So it looked like for the cooking trip to New York and the Disney trip, there wasn't anything necessarily for the financial assistance. Melinda, I think you sort of just addressed that. I just want to circle back on it.
Right, you want to speak to it, Carol, they fundraise.
You know what, can we vote on this one first? Did you have a question on the problem?
I think it's mostly all of them, just because they vary in expense.
Okay, sure.
And is there a general fund that folks can pull from? Or is it, is it specific to the field trip itself?
It's a combination, actually, of both. So different field trips fundraise in different manners, like the music department and the band fundraise. But there's also some accounts at the building level that we assist students as necessary, too. And then Nature's Classroom has the PTAs that contribute. So it's a little bit different at each level and each building. And any of you can speak up if you think differently about that.
I mean, that's right. We have a student welfare fund, and so prior to the students being asked to commit to a trip, particularly the more expensive ones, like the music trip, we determine how much money we can allocate to supporting students in the trip. And then we give, we share that with the students and allow them to apply, or we reach out to students who we know who have known financial needs and-- have known financial needs and, you know, our social worker meets with students in a confidential way and talks with parents to sort of validate the need and then we privately just transfer money on behalf of those students. And in other cases, there are the fundraisers that Carol can talk about and like the mattress fundraiser and some other clubs and groups do to support their trips.
So generally, we can say with a level of confidence that the students know that if they're in a financial fund, they understand the method in which they could receive financial assistance.
Yes, and we publicize that as well.
Awesome. Thank you. And at the elementary level, we just make sure the parents know. Yeah. Great. Thanks. Did you have anything else, Carol?
Well, I just wanted to say, we do everything for the culinary trip to defray the cost for the students so that we do do more major fundraisers. And usually, the first year we were able to get it down pretty close. Depends on the size of the number of students that go.
They look like great trips. And I mean, everything seems, it seems like these are really rich educational experiences. So I think it's something that we should be so proud of.
Absolutely.
That we're able to offer this and I'm glad that, you know, it seems like there's a very thoughtful process in place, just in case anyone should need some financial assistance.
Our goal is to never let a student not be able to attend something because of a financial issue at home. Is a culinary group gonna do pies for Christmas?
I'm not quite sure. I can't answer that exactly.
Find out though, I'll ask her.
We do have a lot of things planned.
Anything I don't have to cook would be great. Okay, thank you. So I hope that, um.
That's great, thanks.
Okay. So let's go back to that motion. May I have a motion to approve the North Haven High School Future Problem Solvers trip to the University of Mass?
Oh, second.
And thank you. Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. The next one is, I would put two, may I have a motion to approve the North Haven High School Culinary Arts Program Field Trip to Havens Cooking School in New York from October, excuse me, from April 24th to 25th? Or to the High School Culinary Arts Program Field Trip to Orlando, Florida for the week of April 26th, April 30th, 2018, based on their fundraising. Everyone said, did you?
No, I said 2019.
Oh, did I say, yeah, 2019, I'm sorry, thank you. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Now may I have a motion to approve the North Haven High School's Music Program Field Trip to Washington D.C.? Is this, we gonna have school that week? From April 25th? No, it's earlier this week, this year. From April 25th to April 28th, 2019. Just seems everybody's out that week.
So moved.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I ask though, I mean, are there any students that would overlap that are in culinary arts and also in the band?
They have to make a choice.
Yeah.
Every year, they have to make a choice, both financially and which one they want to participate in. Some are alternating their years.
But we do have students that are, that do overlap.
Yes.
They have to make meals for the band.
Or they don't get a solo. That your solo's done. Okay, then may I have a motion to approve the North Haven High School Sewing, Design and Merchandising Classes Field Trip to New York, to the New York City Garment District and the Fashion Institute of Technology Museum in either April or May 2019 at a date to be determined. So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Just so people understand, so we made a decision, I think it was last year, that we would try to get as many field trips as we could done by, approved by the board by this time of the year so that they can do all of their fundraising, we can see where money is. So that's why we seem to be going through all of these right now. May I have a motion to approve the district's fifth grade field trip to Nature's Classroom in Colberg, Connecticut from May 13th through 17th?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I think that's, it's turned out great, all the work that you guys have put into it.
You've done amazing work.
I think absolutely, the reports from last year were just tremendous. I think it's fantastic, the way the whole district has come together on that.
I think so too.
I'm really excited about that.
And we'll hope that next year for those who choose not to go, there's not a tornado to affect the field trip.
Yeah, that was, it was a little bit unfolding.
Yeah. But even that was handled so wonderfully as they were there. To say in all my years, I've never known there to be a tornado during Nature's Classroom.
Okay, all in favor? Did I do motions?
I think so, yeah.
All in favor? Any calls? Motion passes. Then may I have a motion to approve the Ridge Road 4-5 grade field trip to the Bronx Zoo in the Bronx, New York at a date to be determined. Is this the whole school, fourth and fifth, or is it the integrated day?
Integrated day.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the Ridge Road 4-5, integrated day grades, field trip to the Bronx Zoo in the Bronx, New York at a date to be determined?
Can we? I was gonna say, with the understanding that they're not going on a Friday.
Yeah, so I think we've kind of made that.
Oh, well, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay. Let me rephrase. May I have a motion to approve the Ridge Road 4-5 grade field trip to the Bronx Zoo in the Bronx, in New York State on a future date to be determined with the understanding that the trip will not be done on a Friday?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Could you go through the list?
Well, you know, we'll get a couple more, but Melinda, and everyone getting all these, these.
It's no easy feat, let me tell you.
Brian, information, anything I might?
Brian Tombrichon did not meet. Business office is in transition again. Frank Connolly will be our intern, bringing us through budget season and that's what we have as we're coming up to budget season.
Okay, thank you. Hold anything from them?
No, we didn't meet. We then got canceled.
Okay. North Haven Education Foundation, Joe?
Yep. So, excuse me, next Thursday, the 15th, from 5:30 to 8:30 is the Community Star Dinner and the honorees are Linda Battalain, Larry Lazaroff and David Migos. It's gonna be at the, excuse me, it's in the middle school at the cafe. Tickets are $20. Tours of the middle school will also be available at the event. I have a link to buy tickets. I'm not sure what the best way to get that out is, but also if you just go to Eventbrite.com and you search Community Star, North Haven, Connecticut, it pops up so you can purchase tickets that way.
I received something in an email from someone. I don't know if it's from the Education Foundation, but with that link.
Yeah, yeah.
Great, thank you, Joe. We thank them for having us. They've been doing it every other year now?
This is the first time in a while, I think, trying to bring it back.
Three or four.
Yeah.
Great.
And they're three well-deserving members of the community still.
I am the out of town, I'll be coming back late afternoon, early evening, so I'm gonna do my best to get there. Okay, policy, we have nothing new. I know Dr. Cronin had, we had gone over some things a while back that we presented to the board, but as he's not here, there's nothing new to bring up on the policy. And PTA council?
We have not met. Our next meeting is the end of this month.
Okay, great. So may I have a motion to approve the standing committee reports?
I make the motion, approve the reports.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any calls? Okay. We're going to postpone the report of the Ad Hoc Athletic Committee and approving the rented charges because Randy is not, Chairman of the Ad Hoc Committee is not going to be able to attend tonight, so we're gonna postpone that and put that on our December meeting. Dr. Cronin is not here, did he leave you anything?
Nope, and I have no report as well.
You have no report either. Okay. So you had nothing to, either. Okay, great. You don't have?
Can I have a quick question for Melinda? Asap results, are we gonna get those?
Um, so.
Do they get mailed to us or?
Yes, you have a student who is in, was in eighth grade, right?
Yeah.
Those were the ones, everybody else got them. They are going out, do they get mailed today or tomorrow?
Yeah. Dr. Cronin's letter said the 9th, can they go today?
Yeah, we took care of it, they're all stamped, they're already mailed.
Everyone else has went out, but the state took back the last year's eighth grade students because there was an error in the report, so they went separately and they're going, so. By Saturday.
No worries.
Took care of that. She got mail today.
We discussed.
I also too, I should have done, are you still?
No, I'm good, it's good.
And I don't know if you want to talk about the NIASC committee, I want to thank the board members who were able to attend that day. You know, I couldn't attend, so I really appreciate it. I hope that you've got a lot out of it. And Dr. Cronin had put in our email and he had told me also on the call that they were very impressed with our board members, our conversation, so.
Oh, but I said they should be, I meant the high school, not the board members, I'm sorry. It's ridiculous. They should be.
You guys show up on a Sunday and that was terrific. I appreciate it very much.
No, I mean, the high school speaks for itself, that's what I was trying to say, I apologize.
I have a little thank you note for you too. Very good.
So I just, I just want to say thank you all for doing that and, you know, as Dr. Dellie said, it was Sunday and it's very important, but we really appreciate it.
The work the high school put in was tremendous, absolutely tremendous, the entire staff and it just was evident.
There's a lot that goes into that. Okay, public comments? Hi, Mary.
Mary White Summerlane, so I was wondering if the, when, Nina, the chair, when you met with the first selectman, if the subject of money to replace the fields, did he discuss that with you?
Well, the only quick conversation we had was that, you know, basically that to take a look at it, that we have 10 years to go on it and that we would look at it as time moves on.
As we got closer to it?
Yeah.
Okay. So a small update on that, I was attending, I think it was a Board of Finance meeting and I was talking again about planning for the replacement of the fields. And so that meeting had occurred after the Board of Selectmen meeting that I attended where the first selectman did say that, as I asked if we could use the Quinnipiac payment money in lieu of taxes, if we could use that for amenities. And he said, yes, but not next year because that money is gonna be used for the fire department's training facility. So now back at the finance meeting, so when the subject came up again, as far as like replacement, the first selectman stated that money, that money, the Quinnipiac money in lieu of taxes, that when it got closer to needing to replace the fields, that those payments in lieu of taxes, that those payments could go towards the cost to replace the fields. So I wanted to mention that. And also, so continuing on with the money which we will be able to use for amenities for the fields, not next year, but next year, what I planned on doing was to write a letter to the Chair of the Middle School Building Committee, Gary Johns. And in the letter, I wanted to request that the committee, since they're still, you know, meeting, if they could come up with type and approximate cost and, you know, details on those amenities that they want to have, you know, put in the, in the field, you know, amenities such as bleachers, you know, how many, what type, location, the concession stand, bathrooms, press box, ticket box stand, location area. Because I think that if we could get the building committee to prepare for the future when we're looking to have these amenities put in, we will have, or the board will have an idea as to what is the cost. You know, if we are looking at $300,000 from a Quinnipiac university payment, what can we get for that? So I think if we have things in place, then this way, we're like ready to go, not like, oh, okay, what do we want to do kind of thing.
I believe they already have that.
Okay.
Because that was when they first started, that was when they put together the field, part of the middle school project. They had ideas of how much the bleachers would cost, how much each thing would cost. So I think if you write to him, he should be able to share that.
Yeah, because I think some of the meetings that I've watched, they, they have ideas of what they want, but like they couldn't even figure out or agree upon how many bleachers they wanted, did they want them in sets, you know, you know what I mean?
It depends on who you talk to, who wants bleachers for a thousand spectators and who thinks 500 is more than enough.
Yeah, yeah, so, but I just think that, just to have an idea, because when, you know, not next year, but the following year comes and the money's there, you know, we want to get going on something. We don't want to have all this time where, oh, we have to meet and figure out, you know what I mean? I'm just trying to see if I can get them since they are still meeting. You know, they need to agree, they are the building committee, as to what they want. So this way, everything is kind of in place, so when the money arrives, you know, we know what we're doing. So that's, I was gonna make that request and see what happens. I just want to let you guys know.
I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate all that you're doing for looking out for the future.
Okay, thank you.
Before I move on, just for our board members who didn't know, it's not a Board of Education project, but just to let you know that Benacord Field, the ground was broken to start the new concession stand, meeting room, lavatories, et cetera, about two weeks ago.
Just one that they had a grant.
Yes, one that the town had a grant for. Any other public comment tonight? Okay, then may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion on adjourn?